Unless there's anything else, we're going to move on to item number eight. Comments from council members. First item, item A, Councilmember Marty Medina requests a whole study session to review the city's streets sweeping enforcement policies.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm requesting a study session to examine our street sweeping policies and to determine how we can fairly and efficiently improve them. During my eighteen years of living in the heart of San Bruno, my friends, family, and I have received our share of street sweeping parking tickets. I grew to accept this as being necessary to reduce the chances of flooding in the avenues. So tonight, there are two policies that I'm interested in reviewing, and I'll start with the easy one. Can street sweeping enforcement be temporarily suspended in neighborhoods affected by city-approved construction? I request this based on the following reasons. Another phase to replace water and sewer mains have started this year east of El Camino and west of Huntington Avenue. Parking spaces are already scarce in these older neighborhoods. Three, more residents are home due to COVID-19, and there are less places to park on the street. Four, additional streets have recently been added to the street sweeping enforcement near downtown. All of these things result in more added stress to our neighborhoods with parking shortages. So, I did bring this up to the city manager, I did get emails on it, but it was necessary to bring it to council to see if, is a study session necessary to ask that the sweeping, street sweeping enforcement be suspended in these neighborhoods? So that's, I guess the first question is to our city attorney or city manager, can we direct the city manager to suspend the enforcement in these neighborhoods?
Let me take that, and I'll get back to it by the city attorney or the police chief. So, Councilmember Medina, you did ask that question, and we, I did look into that matter, and we currently have a practice that we have not implemented for our own city projects, but we can, the police department and the police chief have already looked into issuing a temporary order to cease parking enforcement when we have city construction projects, and so we can define it where, if we are taking away parking for a significant amount of time, we can have a order within the police department that will go out to those that issue tickets, given the city project to limit enforcement, and so that power already rests with staff, and you brought that up, and we're already, and in my email box, I have a draft order that the police department drafted as a template, and so I think we can take care of that one. Your latter one for a study session, I will pause now and let you take the next step on that.
Great, thank you for that answer. I think that's going to provide relief to a number of residents here that are really having trouble finding parking. It's great that we're replacing the water and sewer mains, just that it's no parking on both sides of these small streets, and I want to thank you for that. And now to address the larger, more complicated policy question. Are we efficiently performing street sweeping in our neighborhoods? On our website, we have stated that street sweeping is occurring all across San Bruno, and as we know, it is being primarily enforced on the east side of town. And over the years, we've heard that it's due because of the potential flooding issues that are, which I believe in, which are down in the avenues. However, this also brings up, is it really fair? And I'm proposing the following. Wherever street sweeping is needed, it should be enforced. If it is not needed, then street sweeping should be suspended. And if it is ineffective, then something needs to change. And in the study session, we would examine these things so that we can determine what changes provide the best outcomes. So, I'll leave it at that, and I wanted to thank the city manager for this new process. This did not show up on my high priorities in the beginning of the year. It sparked by residents under this condition, and we can provide them some short-term relief during construction, and the question is, when there's no enforcement and cars are parked on both sides of the street, what's the point of a street sweeper going down the middle of the street? So, that's an efficiency problem, a budgeting issue, that if that's not effective, then that worker could be somewhere else, because we know that there's a lot of things that need to get done. So, I'll leave it with my colleagues to see their interest, and if they have any questions, I'd be happy to answer whatever I can.
So, thank you, Councilmember. For me, I think a study session would be of value, and to even expand a little bit. You know, there may come a time for storm drainage, we have requirements the state is going to say that we have to meet, and so it may become a necessity to have enforcement throughout the city. It's a possibility, it's been talked about some time ago, but we have to examine everything, I think, from start to finish. To my memory, you know, I know sometimes it's that us here, this council enacted this, it was enacted back in 1982, so I could not vote then, so I was just a young man, but like all of you, young people. And in 2011, my memory is that it was reviewed, and what did change was the hours. So, it used to be 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and it went from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, because what I and others had heard is, you know, that eight to nine, just whether you're trying to get out of the house, and then you have to go remove the car, run home to find some spot. It is very challenging, and I know where my grandmother used to live, you know, back in those days, the street was clear. A street sweeper could go down with not a problem. A lot of those streets today, that is not the case anymore, and sometimes street sweepers are going down the center of the street. So, I think from an efficiency element, from the storm drain element, I think also it just helps for us, you know, again, my belief is 2011 was the last time it really was looked at, what the true costs were, have it just do citywide, which was a million-plus back then, with the signs and the enforcement and all of those things. So, I would support having a study session, because I think it addresses those bigger issues, questions, and a lot of people still ask the question, why? Why is it happening on my street? On our, my street, it is daunting. I'll tell you, if you don't move your car by a certain point, you're walking a few blocks. So, that's just the reality, so it's gotten more congested, but that's some of my input. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. You know, I talked about this process a couple of years ago with a former council member and a former city manager, because as a new council member, even when I came on, I didn't really understand the process and how you brought things forward. And even to this day, I'm not really happy with the process, because it shouldn't be one council member's great idea to sit down and come forward and say, okay, let's move forward with this great idea, because it's with the hot item that that one council member has. But that we have two opportunities twice a year to come together and discuss and brainstorm, and to come up with a list of priorities, and from that list of priorities, take off the top three, four, or five items, and let staff work on those things. And then the list continues, and the list has those other items. And so now, you have a list of fifty items, and now item fifty-one comes forward, because it's just one item by itself, and we're being said, well, that should be the priority. So, I think it's hard for me to make a decision, and I don't like making these types of decisions when we're just picking one item to discuss tonight and say, hmm, should staff work on this item? Because, folks, there are a lot of priorities in the city, and when we talk about storm drain, let's talk about how we're going to cover our costs for storm maintenance and storm drains, and all the things we're doing to implement the required by law. Those are my big concerns when you want to talk about stormwater and how we get that issue dropped and pressed. I completely and a hundred percent agree with Councilmember Medina. When we have a construction project going on in an area, and you're taking away half the parking, it's just unacceptable. In fact, I'm surprised somebody hasn't thought about that particular issue prior. When you live in it, you breathe it, you see these things that continually to be an issue, and thankful for Councilmember Medina, who actually continues to advocate for his neighborhood, and in those areas where you've got vehicles, construction vehicles, taking up a whole block when they really could have taken up half a block in another area away from the residential neighborhood. So, we as staff have constantly, and members of the councils have constantly been looking at ways to even improve that area, clean up the construction sites, compile multiple pieces of equipment in a condensed area versus spreading it all over and taking up all the parking that exists in a very small neighborhood. So, it's not that it's not a great idea, it's a great idea, and it's something we should be talking about it. In fact, in a one-on-one, we talked about the same thing, about bringing this item forward this year, but guess what happened? So many other priorities came forward, and it didn't make the top ten, the top twenty for council priorities. So, I just think as a council, we have the obligation to look at our priorities and determine what is the priority. If the construction piece is something that staff can implement, it's, you're already ready to go with it, that's great. The other piece that requires a study session requires staff time, is that the piece we really focus on this year? Or do we go back to our list and look at what we want to add on top of the already full plate that staff has? You know, it's tough to project manage a number of things that are going on, and I give it to staff for always having to listen to our great ideas, and some things that never even make it to a council meeting, but that we request and we suggest, and can you do this, and everybody's got to come up with these great ideas. We've got to prioritize that, and it's, I think I've said that enough. Thanks.
I don't know if the vice mayor wants to go first?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Salazar.
Thank you. So, I just heard a couple of people make some excellent points, so I definitely agree with Councilmember Medina's, you know, his observations, and I've heard a lot of the same things, and there's still a lot of questions about why here and not there, and what's the point of just running a street sweeper down the middle of the street? And I think that those questions come up a lot, and I think we actually discussed it quite a few times in the past, but obviously not to everybody's satisfaction, so there's definitely some more, you know, digging that we need to do there, and we probably need to come up with some better communication around what's happening, and, you know, some better evaluation that backs up what those decisions are. But at the same point, I mean, we do have to be sensitive to a process, and, you know, there definitely is a lot on the plate right now, and I know this, it's definitely, like I said, it's come up before, didn't make the priority list, I was thinking, I was reading some posts on the internet, and there was some talk about a citizens academy, which is one of the ideas that I brought to the strategic initiative session, and it didn't make the cut, and I was a little disappointed, but, you know, there's always next year, there's always an opportunity to keep improving, and, you know, I don't think we should be rigid with that list, you know, there should be some opportunity to revisit it and see if, you know, if something has changed dramatically and needs to move on to the list or move higher up on the priority list, but I don't think this is one that we're going to be able to fix easily, and I'm just reaching back into my memory and thinking about some of the prior discussions we've had around this, and some of the points that were raised, and I'm wondering if maybe just having staff revisit some of those previous discussions and bring back some of those points that were raised, because I know that there are some, we have some requirements for running those street sweepers, so we can't just stop doing it. And, you know, the effectiveness, I think, was also addressed in one of those prior presentations, so maybe just a revisit of some of that previous literature in a staff report, and then that could come back to council, and then we could determine at that point if there's anything in there that could turn into an action that we could then decide it's important enough now for some reason to add that to our priority list. But, you know, I don't think anything has changed dramatically from, you know, what we did earlier this year, and that would require us to reevaluate that priority list at this point. And so, I understand it's a problem, and I know it's going to be an ongoing problem, but I don't know that it's evolved to the point where now it's more critical than it was at the beginning of our process. And so, I think the idea of relaxing the construction enforcement, that's an excellent suggestion, and I would definitely be in favor of having staff pursue that portion of it.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I support the idea, I think, I find it confusing myself, and there have been a lot of various posts around equity issues of street sweeping in certain places and not others. I know on Cherry, under the freeway, it's dirty and it's unclear why the street sweeper maybe goes around, maybe there's no tow, there's no, I don't know, the cars don't have to move every couple of hours, I really don't know. I just know that it's dirty, and I think it would be worth it just to understand the process, and the benefit of these public study sessions is that it's not just us, it's the public that can tune in, who have been very vocal in some cases, and determining, you know, why certain streets are getting these street sweeping and others aren't. So, I would support whether it be staff bringing back past presentations, if there's still the process that's being implemented, or if it's a new presentation, to me, as long as the information is timely and it's what staff is doing today, I'd be really curious to know the process. Well, thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Medina, then I had a question for the city manager.
Yeah, and I really appreciate when we have discussions like this, where we're really collaborating, and I want to remain respectful of the process that we put together. And when this construction happens, and if you drive down on some of these streets, I mean, the whole street parking's taken, right? So, that spurred to go ahead and ask the bigger question. So, I'll leave it at that, and coincidentally, Councilmember Mason, Cherry Avenue was the last thing I wanted to talk about, because a number of residents on social media, and social media is important, I mean, that's where people go to first. People are asking for street sweeping there, because it's turned into kind of a RV hangout spot, and people are talking about the nastiest things that are put in the gutter, and this flat area has an increase of trash and debris, and looking at adding street sweeping at that spot, if we were going to have a bigger study session, or maybe staff could go ahead and do it. I'm not saying drop everything right now, the priorities that we had, we agreed to, but to, and I appreciate everybody's suggestion, and seeming that we go ahead and have staff kind of come back and refresh what was said, and come back, and then we could reevaluate at that time. So, I just wanted to thank everybody for having an open mind and being aware of just how weird the whole street sweeping is. So, thank you very much.
And then city manager, listening to my, the colleagues too, they don't want to, we don't want to create a lot of extra work, especially if there's already things that have been there. Even going back into the report is, you know, to history, there is a staff report, I think, from 2011 that gives the history of how, why it has happened, and how might you envision that it might be best for staff to bring back some thoughts, like the vice mayor had said? And I do know to suspend just altogether, I mean, there are spots that people will say the car would never move if it wasn't for street sweeping. And so, you know, and Cherry, I've gotten phone calls and emails and letters on that, and, you know, even I've brought up to the city manager, why can't you have no parking between midnight and 5:00 AM, for example? You know, I don't even know if that's realistic, but, you know, I'm trying to think of other options. But, city manager?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and to the council. Let me begin by saying, I think that this is a policy issue, that given the issues, and I've only been here city manager a little bit over two years, but I've heard so much about street sweeping and the history behind why we enforce on one on east of El Camino, but not on west of El Camino, that I think it's a legitimate policy discussion to have, and then rehab, if there's continuing community sentiment and questions from council about it. But before we talk about that, I do think it's helpful to step up on the balcony a little bit and talk more globally about what we're asking of staff. And so, as we know, we set up a process for city council strategic initiatives. Two years ago, we had priority focus areas, and then we developed individual strategic initiatives under that, and when we met before this budget session, there were over a hundred on the list. We took some off, we distilled it, and we had a priority process where you as a council rappled with all of the pressing issues facing the city, and said, staff, here's what we want you to work on. And you decided that in June, and we committed through that process, that we as staff would report back to you every quarter, and would do a hard look at the six-month mark. We've been at it for two months, right? July and August, and we just started September, so we haven't had a quarter of working on the things that you told us were your highest priority. And what we should not do through that process is continue to add things to the plate of staff every council meeting, because there's a bandwidth challenge, we can only do so much, and as your city manager, if the marker changes every council meeting and we add a new project, I'm constantly rebalancing the work of our staff, and we don't make progress on the things that you have said through the budget, the most important policy document that you adopt every year is the highest marker. Now, that does not mean that urgent things that come up, critical things, that, you know, you drop everything, you move on it. And we've done some of those things, and I think the two things we talked about tonight, movie theaters and looking into outdoor dining, are the classic examples of, we have a pandemic, we want to support our businesses, add this to the work program, right? And we did that without saying, well, if we do this, then we can no longer do X, or if we do that, then Y would be delayed. But if we are going to add significant policy topics that really require work, because it's a real issue, right? It involves staffing, how much staff do we have for enforcement? Staff has said briefly, once this was on the agenda, boy, you know, if we start enforcing throughout the city, we're going to need more staff, right? Absolutely, sweeping the street reduces trash that goes into the storm drain, and we can do a lot better job if the cars were moved on the west side. There's an impact to residents and a strong sentiments around that. This is a significant policy discussion that we should not step lightly in, and as your city manager, I want to give you completed staff work, and I want to make sure that when we step into a heavy policy discussion, we're doing it thoughtfully, and I work with staff to give you the answers to some of the questions that I know you're going to ask when we have this conversation. And this is a heavy one. And so, you gave us a marker two months ago to work on a palette of things, over, I think at this point, we have over fifty-five items on that list that we're working on. And if we add something new, it's actually hard to say this, that something else is going to either be delayed or dropped. And I think it is absolutely your right to say, you know what, this is an important issue, it's come up, we're going to change the marker. You talked about two things, you talked about scheduling the study session and doing the work that is involved in that, and you've also talked about having staff pull up staff reports from years ago and provide those to the city council. What I can tell you, not even having seen those, is that they need to be refreshed, right? They were done for a specific purpose, at a specific time, and you guys are going to have questions that that PowerPoint from 2011 or that PowerPoint from a couple of years ago just isn't going to hit. And so, it's going to be a bit of staff work to do it. And I think if council wants to say, you know what, this is important, city manager, go back, tell us how much time it's going to take to do this and do it right, and we'll make that decision, I'll go back and we'll put together an estimate of time and an estimate of what has to come off the plate or what will be delayed, because now we're taking on this project. We could wait to the six-month mark and see what progress we've made on the things that you said were critically important and rebalance at that time. You could also wait until the October, towards the middle to end of October, when we give you your first quarterly staff report on your approved initiatives, and see where we are with those. I can tell you now, with COVID and everything, we're delayed, right? We've been doing a lot over these last couple of months. Or we can, we could also pull together those staff reports and just send them to you for your review. They may tell you a little bit of what is, but I think we all know what is. I think the question you're really trying to answer is, do we change that? And what are the implications of changing that? Both people, money, impact to the community, you know, by doing a better job sweeping the streets, by making the cars move, how much less trash will go into the storm drains? How much further would that get us to our trash reduction goals from the Regional Water Quality Board? You know, is the cost of doing this, not just money, but potentially negative community sentiment, worth it, because the benefits outweigh the cost? You're going to have those questions, and I think as a professional and as staff, it's our duty to give you those answers. And it's not a someone pull up reports from a few years ago and provide them to you. It's a significant amount of work, and then it's a significant policy discussion. And so, I really want to toss it back to you as elected leaders and as policymakers to say, does this meet that marker? Because we talked about this before, this was on the list, and it didn't make the priority. What has changed that now brings it to the forefront, and do you want us to launch into the work? Or do you want to know what gives, or what comes off the list, if that happens?
City manager's posed a question, and I do see we have a member of the community who has their hand up, if we can bring her in, please, and then we'll bring her back to council to answer his question.
Okay, first, we have Maria Concha. Just one moment. Hi, Maria, can you hear us?
I can hear you just fine, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
I'm ready, thank you. I think one thing that's lost in this whole conversation, and it's something that has been brought up to our attention too, is that we on the east side are getting fined when we don't move our cars, but people on the west side aren't having that happen. And something's not right. I mean, and from what we're hearing, because I've been on the discussions, on the threads, on Facebook, and on Nextdoor, and people are saying, well, we see the street sweepers go around the cars, and everything's fine, and everything's great. Well, you got to move your car out of here, or you're going to get a $60 ticket, and people were just appalled at that. And I was too, when you got your first ticket, and then with COVID coming in and we suspended everything, yeah, everything was great. Streets weren't that bad, but now it's like we're back to moving cars again, and... And at this point in time, I, I don't know about anybody else, but my hours were cut at work and sixty dollars might not be a lot, but it's still sixty dollars if you go someplace else. And there are other people in this neighborhood that I know feel the exact same way. And we've got construction and our streets look like crap, and it seems like everything's happening on the west side and nothing's happening on the east side. And we're like the redheaded stepchildren, and I know I bring this up a lot, but it's true. We feel like we're neglected, that nobody pays attention to what's going on here, and nobody walks around. I've seen, some of the council members have been here and I appreciate that, believe me. But when you don't know what you're living through, like we are right now, not right. So, maybe, just maybe, we either um find everybody the same way, or we stop it altogether. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker, please.
Next is Tom Hamilton.
Uh, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. So, um, the, uh, the um, it's, I'm really seeing this as an equity issue between the, the, the west and the east. I live on the, I live on the west side. The street sweeper comes by my house every other Thursday, um, twice a month, on, you know, on schedule and drives right down the middle of the street because, you know, most of the spots are taken, especially now. Um, but even during, uh, even during, uh, before COVID, um, this go down the middle of the street, and it really didn't serve any purpose. And it really, it seems like, it seems like a no-brainer, if you're not going to tick it, then don't sweep. And it, it's as simple as that. You know, there are areas where we need to sweep and we need to keep those drains clean in order to prevent, to prevent possible flooding. And it, it just, it, it just, it just does not make a lot of sense to, to um sweep in neighborhoods where you're not going to, you know, do the full job and um en- enforce it. So, um, that's my, that's my thought on this, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, uh, next speaker, please.
We have Marco Dorato. Hi Marco, I'm trying to unmute you.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I've been following this issue closely for a couple of years now, uh, being a resident here in the avenues. Uh, and I'm really concerned just about the optics of enforcement on the east side as opposed to lack of enforcement on the west side or other parts of town. Um, the optics are pretty bad, I think in discussions in community and social media, different message boards, I think folks are not willing to understand or accept the fact that enforcement is not uniform across the city. Uh, and I want to be clear, I'm not asking for the street sweepers to stop doing their job on the east side. I know it's needed uh to prevent flooding and other issues. I'm also not asking for the enforcement to stop, I'm just asking for it to be uniform. Uh, and I, I respect the city manager's perspective about being a larger policy issue. And I think that conversation needs to be had and it needs to be prioritized and fit along with the other priority issues that the council has established earlier. Uh, but the optics are pretty bad. Uh, and I also know for specific and personal experience that uh even when folks, for example, are, are working from home and their battery has died and they can't get the car jumped quick enough by AAA, that even notes on the windshield do not save them a ticket. So, I, I think the enforcement needs to be, needs to be uniform, it needs to be reasonable. Uh, and, and we just really need to address the optics. I think when we're not addressing those issues and we're not ahead of them, uh, as folks know here and in the community, then discussion runs rampant and people make up scenarios and make up narratives. So, enforcement should be uniform, I think it should be addressed, and I appreciate um Councilmember Medina for bringing this forward for consideration and possibly a study session. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker, please.
Next we have Stephen Seymour.
Okay, uh, Melissa, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you know, I want to follow, uh, and, and also I thank Marty for bringing this up. Um, I also want to thank Maria and Tom and Marco for speaking uh to this issue. I, I see this the same way, this is an equity issue. Um, you look at the people on the east side and by and large, you know, their incomes aren't what uh those on the west side um have, and yet these are the people uh that may wake up late one day and end up with a sixty dollar ticket on their, on their windshield. Um, I believe that our streets need to be cleaned, and like uh one or more of the speakers said, um, I'm not asking for the street cleaning to stop. Um, we've got a problem with cleanliness of our streets throughout the city, uh, so we can't afford to give it up. But on the other hand, I have stood up in, say, the Cressmore neighborhood or other neighborhoods uh and been talking with uh residents there and watched the street sweeper drive right down the middle of the block. So, we got a couple of issues here, we got an equity issue, and we also have an issue on uh how this impacts people financially. Um, but I look at this from another perspective as well. We've got a city asset and we've got an employee who's driving down the middle of the street. And if we're not going to ask those cars to move so that that employee can do their full job, then maybe we, maybe there's a job that isn't being done right now. And we can uh reallocate that employee and that asset or that employee uh to a, another area of our city that needs help. Um, so, a- again, I want to thank uh Councilmember Medina for bringing this up. Um, this is something that I've now been listening to people for more than five years, talk about it, and it's, it, it, we really need to do something about it, we've got to decide how we deal with this because the optics are bad, as Marco said. Um, Sandra wants to speak as well, so uh you can quit my time and set the, reset the clock for her if you like.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, so what I wanted to add to this conversation was also some preventative measures from getting litter on the street to begin with. Um, I mean, hopefully, a lot of residents would take care not to continue throwing masks and their plastic gloves and their plastic bottles. If we can get that message out, that maybe if a lot of that stops, so we don't have to have the street um sweeping out there. And another major uh role that at least in our area comes into play is the garbage, it gets put out, and people overfill those garbage cans. And those garbage cans get either knocked over or the crows pull things out. But I'm wondering if we can work with recology. Um, there are other cities whose garbage cans and recycling business have um a snap on them. So, they stay closed until the garbage man come along and open them. If they wouldn't be easily opened by, say, a bird. So, I think we need to address those issues as well, not just after the garbage arrived there. But it definitely is an equity issue. Um, I'm the street cleaner here, like during COVID, when cars weren't moving, I continued cleaning the streets. But I, I think a lot of people might not move their cars off, and if we don't have the street cleaning, I don't know. But we, we need to treat both parts of the ci- city equally, I think that's only fair, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker, please.
Kim O'Brien.
Hi, it's actually Raina, um. Uh, I am so glad that this topic is, uh, we discussing about this topic, and um I also uh agree that we have a problem in San Bruno. I don't understand when was it decided that um the east side was going to be cited for not moving the vehicles? But the west side, basically, the sweeper just goes around the vehicles. Uh, I don't know, how long has it been? We've been here six years and it's been that long, and it seems like that is unfair. Why is it that uh the west side gets treated um better than the east side? And um, I too, I agree with Sandra that basically something needs to be done um with, with the way the uh garbage cans um get overfilled. And maybe educating the community will be one, because I too pick up the garbage wherever I, I go. But um, let's have a discussion, because I don't think it's fair that the east side is treated like a second-class citizen. So, it is time, I'm glad that all the speakers have brought up this issue, and it's time for basically um, for the community to, for the east side to be heard, be, we need, we, we are one city, not the west side or the east side. We are San Bruno, the city of San Bruno, so let's treat all of us like equally. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, and, and I'm sure we have one more, one more speaker, uh, please.
Terry Chavez. Just one moment, Terry. Terry, it's not allowing me to have, you have to come in as a participant to speak. Says you're using an older version of Zoom. I'm trying to unmute you.
Okay, there, can you hear me, Melissa?
Yeah.
Sorry, I apologize. Um, thank you for taking my comment, I just have a few words to say. I wanted to say I appreciate what all the prior comments, all the prior community members had stated. I want to mention that I live on the west side of El Camino, and I've lived here since two thousand and nine. I didn't know that other residents within our great city of San Bruno are receiving tickets during the street cleaning because no one in my neigh- in my neighborhood receives tickets, and none of my neighbors know either. So, I just, I just want to um state that we, it's not, it shouldn't be east versus west. We're all one community, and Raina, Raina, thank you for mentioning, we are all one community, we, we really need to stand together. I just want to reiterate that a lot of my neighbors are, were clueless as to who's receiving parking tickets. We didn't know at all until we saw some Facebook posts that we have other community members in other, in other neighborhoods receiving parking tickets for street cleaning. And although we're not receiving any parking tickets for the street cleaning, we don't think that it's fair that some of our fellow community members are receiving parking tickets when other, other um neighborhoods are not. But I just want to make sure everyone knows that most of the city, well, on the west side, there are pockets of the city that have no clue that other parts of the city are receiving um tickets during the street cleaning until we read the comments on Facebook. Um, thank, thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Rico, you're muted. There we go, sorry. Um, a lot of questions, comments were brought up, uh, like to go to the city manager. You wanted to uh address or comment quickly on that before we bring it back to, to council.
Sure, Mayor, uh, I, sure, I'll do that. Um, like I said before, I, I think this is a, a very, very legitimate policy discussion. Uh, the question for the city council, uh, i- i- is when? Um, and to uh put some of your other priorities uh down uh to have this or, or, or plan it out later. What I, what I, I guess what I could say from the public comments is that, that, that's just a taste of um the significant issues that surround this. You know, there were, there were a number of things that, that were mentioned. One thing was, well, if you're just going down the middle of the street, stop sweeping. Um, I, I can tell you that even in some of the neighborhoods where they do go down the middle of the street, there's significant trash that is diverted from the storm drain. And so, it is still beneficial to do that, and by not doing that, you actually will have more trash going in to the storm drain. And all you have to do is see um how much debris is uh in the sweeper at the end of the day. And there are also parts of, of San Bruno where um on the west side, where tickets are not given, but there are cars that are moved and the sweep, the street sweeper is zigzagging and picking up significant trash. Um, I would also say to the comments that were raised um about uh potentially stopping ticketing, the industry standard for um trash diversion is to actually require the cars to move. And the way you require the cars to move is to have a fine schedule and ticket them if they don't move. And so, uh, we sort of have an issue that's wrapped up in equity because um there's a, a, there was a policy decision that was put in place to uh issue tickets on the west, on the east side, but not on the west side. But the industry standard is really moving toward ticketing uh and forcing the cars to move because then you have the greatest diversion uh, uh, in your stormwater. Uh, and I will say, in a city like San Bruno that has hills, that's windy, um, you, you're going to have a lot of leaves and things clogging up your storm drains if you're not out there sweeping. And so, the answer is really to, to, to not sweep, but the question is, do we do a better job at sweeping by requiring cars to move? Um, and what I would tell you also is, the next time this is on your agenda, whether it's us coming back with more with um the reports from a few years ago or study session, there will be robust community engagement and sentiments from uh multiple sides of the community. And, and again, my reci- my, my recommendation is, you walk into that thoughtfully and you allow staff uh to do the background work, to, to give you answers to the questions that we know you're, you're going to want to ask and the questions that, that you're going to um want answered to, and, and some of the analysis that you're going to want. For example, um, ticket revenue, if you start ticketing on the west side, may be robust initially, but once people start getting tickets uh and they have more places to park, you're likely not going to get that revenue. And so, the, it may be a, a, a cost to start issuing uh tickets on the west side and have the staff and, and have to bring on the staff to do that in the long run. And so, we want to put that analysis together for you and uh if we're going to have this policy discussion. Uh, again, my, my recommendation is, um, you know, l- l- let's calendar it and let's, uh, let's allow staff uh time uh to put together the information for you.
Okay, uh, and council, I'll start calling on the hands that I see up for the council, and let's just uh w- once you're called upon, let's get everything out, and then uh we'll just make sure we can talk to everybody who wishes to speak. Uh, first is Councilmember Mesa.
Yeah, I just want to say I support um, uh, the city manager's recommendation to let council, to let the staff go ahead and analyze this. I wasn't sure if it was clear whether that's now or in the future. I do think though, given that we're in the middle of COVID, that we're encouraging people to stay at home, there's still a shelter-in-place order. Um, this is impacting people more today than maybe it was eleven months ago. And I, I do acknowledge that staff is at capacity, I hear that. Um, I also heard more people speak tonight on this subject at ten thirty at night than we've seen in a meeting in probably five months. And so, maybe even longer. So, I think given um that this isn't a new issue, um, and given that we're really, from what I gather, just asking for information on what the process is now, we're not even saying that we need to change it, but what is the process? Um, and then we could hear during public comment, like any other meeting from the public, um, and then maybe provide some recommendations at that time or at a later time. But for me, I just really do want to know, what is the process? What are our policies, uh, and what is actually happening day to day on our streets? Um, thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
Um, I just can't support anything at this time other than the construction uh process where it sounds like city manager Javon is already moving forward with something like that. Until we can assess all of our priorities and determine how we put this too on the plate of staff. And city manager Javon Grogan, I want to thank you for your honest feedback because, you know, I, I think that nobody heard what he just said. And that is, we just continue to add and add and add the items to this plate. Where's the breaking point, folks? You know, i- i- is, is this just another item to add? Because here's my item I'd like to add, let's focus on utility costs. How are we going to get to lower utility costs? How do people afford to pay their utility costs? Did you see your water bill recently? That's a big issue. What about offering some sort of discount? PGE just came out with uh FERA, it's a utility discount at eighteen percent for electricity. Let's focus on those bigger pictures to address all of our community and how we can get through this COVID. Because there's some serious people who can't afford to pay their rent, can't afford their utility costs. Let's get staff to work on that, and then figure out how we're going to pay our, our costs, they're continuing to increase in many different areas. Again, I just can't support something without having the full picture. Again, I just can't support something without having the full picture. I'm not, I'm not doing my job right, and we're not either. So for anybody to say, yes, this is a great idea, because you're looking at one item, without looking at the fifty items to figure out what's the priority? Isn't doing this, the the residents of this community the justice? You agreed to as a council member to move forward. And to think that staff can just pull an item, a report, Mayor Medina, out of the archives from two thousand and eleven or two thousand and ten is, again, staff's time. Let's be fair, folks. Let's be real. Let's give them the opportunity to work on what they're working on. Let's come back with a priority list and then say, do we wanna add this item on there? And staff's gonna say, we can't add anymore, because I can guarantee you, I can already feel them sinking as we speak. Then figure out what we can take away. And I'm okay with taking other things away, as long as we're all in agreement on what we're gonna add to it and what we're gonna take away. But just just having this one item come forward, it doesn't, it's it's not fair.
Councilmember Medina. You're muted, Marty.
I, this Medina's turn. Um, I'm fine with the city managers uh calendaring this this topic and and bringing back um the progress made on other topics and and at that point, we could shuffle it around a little bit. Um, the intent of my uh effort to to have a study sess- se- study session was to bring up the subject and it and and I already talked about that and and we and I think we're ready to go forward. I I don't appreciate a lecture, though, uh Council uh Member Davis. I mean, we all get to decide what we're gonna do with our voice and who we re- who we represent. So I I I'm pushing back on that. That's not necessary. I've been here pl- plenty of time to to know what my my role is, and I don't need anybody telling me otherwise. So let's chill out. Um, I'm I'm okay with the city manager's proposal, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
By the way, I'm sorry, it wasn't directed towards you, Councilmember Medina. It it, I just can sit here every meeting and it's the same thing after another. We just continue to bring on to staff and it's, I'm sorry, I I'm I'm passionate, because maybe the difference is is every single day I work in a utility business that deals with COVID. And every single day, there's one crisis after another, and I feel the pain. So I feel like I'm a staff member on this Zoom meeting today, feeling the pain that I suffer through every single day. And then you throw in fires, and then you throw in other things that happen in your city, and it's challenging. It really is. And I think that everybody is 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 tired. You know, our meetings go until midnight at night, and staff's been there since eight o'clock this morning. So I guess I'm passionate for them. I guess I feel for them. I feel like we just continue to ask and ask, and I I it's it's hurtful. It's it's hard for me to 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 go through it. I mean, it's, and I and I apologize for being so passionate. If I was rooted anyway, I definitely apologize for that. It wasn't my intention. I was not directing my comment to you. But I think the mayor knows the history, and I think that he knows that a study session is not simple. It takes a lot of staff time. And this is a volatile item that will bring out everybody that's never showed up to a council meeting before and speak on this behalf. And do I agree it should never be about this side or that side? It's not about that issue. I agree that we should never have a home flood, and I agree that we should have to worry about getting a ticket, because I forgot to move my car. I just paid for a ticket a couple of weeks ago, because a car was parked the wrong direction. And the neighbor just paid around the corner for a ticket, because they pulled up to jump their their daughter's car and got a ticket, because their car was parked the wrong direction. So it's happening on the west side. Don't don't think that the tickets aren't happening. But I just feel like we have to think about what we're going through. This this is evolving COVID. We don't know if next week, there's a whole new regulation, a whole new thing, and there's staff jumping through more hoops. And so just, that's that's where it's coming from. So that's, that's all I have to say. I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, I'm fine with the city manager's recommendation for myself. Anybody else? Uh, Vice Mayor Salazar.
Uh, I'm I feel like there's a little bit of misinterpretation, uh, because I I heard the city manager say something and and then I'm hearing other people saying, I support what he said, but I think going in a different direction. So what I I heard the city manager say is that we should wait until, or he's he's recommending that we wait until we get at least to the point where we have a normal checkpoint and then figure out if this needs to be uh shuffled into the deck. And so if that's what everybody is concurring to, then I'm in favor of revisiting this at that point, uh, that next checkpoint, but not um doing anything uh before then. And I I agree, it's an important topic, and I I do wanna see it discussed. And uh, but I just, you know, a- after hearing the the city manager concur with a lot of the concerns I had, I I have to say that uh it it would be appropriate to wait.
City managers wanted to clarify that we're all on the same page?
Yes, uh, so uh for clarity, my my recommendation was to wait to that normal checkpoint, which again is the six-month mark, um, which uh you will have that report uh during the month of January. In January twenty twenty-one. So you guys approved these strategic initiatives uh to in June, and we are now two months into the first quarter, July, August. And so September will make the first quarter. We will report out on that in October. Um, and then the the second quarter will be uh October, November, December, and we will report out on that in January. And the plan was to give you a written status report at the uh first quarter mark and have a larger discussion in January about where we are on meeting those uh initiatives. Remember, a number of them um are multi-year, some of them, uh, I think all of them, in general, require interdepartmental teams uh to execute, and six-month gives us enough enough time to make some real progress on them. Uh, and then that January conversation was also meant to help to lead into our budget conversation as well for the following year. And so it's a quarterly update with a six-month uh hard check-in.
Okay, everybody understand? I see nod. Yes, yes. Okay, all right, all right. Thank you for clarifying it, so that we're, we'll leave this topic all on the same page. Thank you, City Manager. Okay, uh, we're still under uh council comments. Um, and Mr. Medina, was there anything else for you, sir?
Yes, as a matter of fact, this is really short. Wanted to remind the community out there that um the San Bruno Community Foundation is uh gonna have a grant workshop. This is an opportunity for community groups to apply for grants up to twenty-five thousand to support new or existing programs that benefit the San Bruno community. For more information, uh, go to sbcf.org. You also may call six five zero seven six three zero seven seven five. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Mason.
Thank you. I I just wanted, sorry, I didn't know we had switched topics. I just wanted to say, just for the record, that um, I I understand and I'm hearing what staff is saying, but I still do think that six, I mean, waiting till January for something that's impacting people every day, I think is a long time. And I'd be happy to um work with the city manager to to actually exchange one of my priority items and wait until next year uh for this item. And so um I just wanna throw that out there. I just looked at my strategic initiatives and my three items. Um, and I think one of them I can, one of them can wait. It's not gonna be done this year anyway. So I'd be happy to switch it out if that means that this one would get some priority. Because again, I wanna reiterate that it's really asking the question of what we're doing now as opposed to how we can improve it or how we can change it. Um, so I'll I'll leave, I'll leave it at that, uh unless someone wants to make further comment. Um, and then I just wanted to, I just a couple of things, I think, since our last meeting. I just really wanted to thank um the city manager, Grogan, because I'm so happy to see Florida Park um coming to fruition. And even though it's not our end game, um, I feel like at least we're in the game, where there's some grass and it's finally not a blight to the neighborhood after about seven years. And um I'm just so happy to see uh something happening. And I think uh if it wasn't for you moving, I think, quickly and actually acknowledging that people have to look at the dirt every single day they wake up, I I think it probably would be the same right now. So I wanna extend my gratitude for that. Um, I also wanted to make sure I thanked um staff, especially Jennifer, who um City Manager Grogan brought this up earlier, but she did step in at the very end of our labor negotiations. Um, and I think it was a kind of a really tough negotiation from um what I saw and from my own experience walking into a four-million-dollar deficit and COVID happening. And I just think that it was a, we were in a really tough position. Um, but I also wanna thank our union partners for working with us and all of our staff. Um, I think it's really important that we acknowledge that you're definitely appreciated, and I know that I ask for a lot. But I think it's important that everybody be working to move our city forward. And as I said to our directors when we first met, we all have to be agile at this time. I too am going to work. I too am working full-time um in this international pandemic, and it's difficult. Um, but we will get through it and we'll do it together. Um, I wanted to thank the woman who spoke earlier on the miniature golf course and throw that out for any tan pran developers. Maybe some indoor miniature golf would be a a great idea. I hadn't even thought of that. Um, and I just wanted to also um say that for the movie drive-in, somebody brought up, I still love that idea. And someone brought it up to me today, and I wanted just to say it. Um, so one of the public commenters actually earlier today contacted me and said, what about whether we could partner with any of the schools? Because they have the big parking lots or the town center or some location that already has a parking lot where COVID wouldn't be as much of an issue, because you can still stay in your cars. Um, so just throwing that out there, because it came to my attention today. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Any other comments from the other two? Okay, so I'll go ahead and finalize this. Obviously, uh, there are three things that I'd like to adjourn the meeting uh in. One is acknowledging September eleventh, which is a few days from now. Also, there was uh last Friday, I happened to be at the city park and saw a gathering over by the rec center and uh went over to to look and found out that it was um four young lady uh who, she was only twenty-three, passed away. Uh, Shelby uh Childress, I just said it correctly, I hope. Chil- Childress, sorry. Um, and she worked at the rec. She had volunteered and worked at the recreation center for ten years. Uh, uh, she was a recreation leader. She dealt with the after-school sports pro- uh school programs. She dealt with all the camps year-round. And I had an opportunity to talk to her brother and her mother, who obviously had just been about a week and uh were grieving. But the young uh folks came together to offer their uh respect and and love to one another. And I did tell her mother that I would be acknowledging her with her permission uh tonight for someone who has um been known as the nice person, always smiling, laughing, kind, uh, and has a good soul. But I wanted to also acknowledge her, and I think I can speak on behalf of the council. Our our heartfelt sympathy and thoughts and prayers are with uh her family. Uh, and finally, of course, tomorrow, um, almost here, uh, is obviously ten years that um we had a devastation and tragedy that we were, we talked about earlier. So um what I would like to do also, um, for those on an eleven, for Shelby, and for those in remembrance, as you can see below the names of those eight that were lost, that we adjourn um in silence for all those. We'll go ahead and adjourn this to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on September twenty-second, twenty twenty at seven P M. Uh, all, be s- be healthy, be safe, and have a good night.